It's a concern we share.
We know that there's issues with it.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else here for open forum this evening? All right. It is time for the City Hall Liquor Store Project Update and John Higginson is with us. I'm not so sure, is this like the last time we're gonna see you?
No.
Oh, wow.
You'll see me again, I'm like a bad penny. Again, my name is John Hagan Miller. I work for McGough Construction and I'm Site Superintendent for the City Hall and the Municipal Liquor Store Project. This might be my last update, but you'll still see me.
Okay, I guess I didn't say that very well. Was this gonna be your last update?
Unless you wanna kick me out, it's up to you.
Nope.
We are finishing with the punch list. I'm gonna say we're probably about ninety-five percent complete. There's a few more items to complete at the wash bikes windows again. And a few other items. I don't have an update on the shelving for the walk-in cooler. I think they're coming possibly next week, but I'm not positive since that's sort of your side of it.
It's set to ship on March 3rd, maybe here as late as the 5th. Installers might not be able to get here till the 10th.
Okay. So there's your update on that. The tables for the council are scheduled for delivering to Innovation at the end of March and being installed right after that. And at that time, the AV system will be installed since they are integrated into the council chamber or council tables. We do have some spring work coming up, landscaping, some pavement work and the work on the roof with the green roof. And again, as Mike knows, please feel free to call if any issues come up. I'm willing to take your call and I'm willing to run up here if you need to. But I would like to thank everyone in the city, the city council especially, all the city workers and staff, the local businesses that made us feel like we're at home. And it's sad to leave, but I have a long honeydew list at home. Very long, so. Again, thank you very much, I appreciate everything. You guys are a great client and we'd like to work with you again.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the second opportunity. All right. Looks like that could be taken off the running.
Not ready.
Let's leave it there. Honorary line on the agenda.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of the items? I have one quick question.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Craig, did you have any questions or comments?
No, no.
I just had one very quick question, the liquor store hire, is that an increase as we get ready for the new store and better hours?
It's a replacement.
It's a replacement, okay. That was my question on that, okay. Wasn't sure if we're getting ready, heading in that direction or not. Okay, that was my only question. All in favor of the current consent agenda, Craig?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. Okay. Next up, Cook County Chambers Service Agreement. In our last meeting, we approved that service agreement and had some bit of discussion, just a better understanding of how that is to work with lobbyists and of course, our main objective, not that there can't be others, but our main objective is the wastewater treatment plant funding. And, thank you. So, with several different questions, we have invited Linda Jerk, Executive Director of the Cook County Chamber, to kinda give us a little primer on what it means to work with the lobbyists' expectations. I know one of the questions asked was, do we get regular feedback, or I shouldn't say feedback, but updates on things and just sort of a general, not that we wouldn't like to hear how successful your trip and Mike's with everyone else last week as well, but it was basically just to understand, what does it mean to have the service agreement and work with the chamber and in particular, the lobbyists?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors, or Brady Powers, Gary Gamble, David. This is kinda fun. And I do get ten minutes, so I intend to use nine of it, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you for having me, Linda Jerk, Executive Director of the Cook County Chamber of Commerce as well as Visit Cook County. I have been the Chamber Director for three years, doing that dual-purpose role. Really pleased to have the City of Grand Marais onboard with us this session and onboarding with us as a member of the Cook County Chamber of Commerce. Mike and I have talked along, along, a lot about it. So with that, I could tell you that the Cook County Chamber of Commerce formed as a county chamber in 2013. One of the main objectives and a full third of our budget with the chamber, which is a small budget, is spent on the services of having a governmental affairs team at the Capitol. For any of you that have had the opportunity to testify in front of the House or the Senate or, you know, stroll through the halls of the Capitol trying to really get some law in order, it's quite an experience and it really, our success at the Capitol and with any laws that we pass is really dependent on the work that our governmental affairs team schedules and organizes for us. We, for a number of years, since I came back to Cook County, which is now almost twelve years ago, we have participated in Duluth and St. Louis County at the Capitol. I've always felt that we can be the forgotten counties on the North Shore with Lake and Cook, so you will see a presence of both Lake and Cook County at that big meeting. And it's much like any other, you know, you're gonna get the Brewers Day, you're gonna get the League of Minnesota Cities Days. We make a really big impact that day. So, in the fall, the Chamber Directors adopt a legislative agenda and it really is that partnership that you are coming into the fold with as the City of Grand Marais. And that really was focused on the improvements that we need for the wastewater treatment plant. That price tag is ten million and we hit the pavement running. I can truthfully say, Mike and I put at least five or six miles on in one day, running from meeting to meeting, back a couple of weeks ago now, I guess it was.
Yeah.
Today. Two weeks ago today. And we met with a number of legislators and the other two agenda items that we have on our legislative agenda were very, very thoughtfully scheduled out by John Burns, a member of our governmental affairs team of Carnival Burns. So with that, we met with a lot of folks within bonding. What we heard, I think loud and clear, was, you know, hopefully there'll be a bill this year, hopefully they'll consider our five million dollar request. We also know that there's a lot of people in line because a bonding bill wasn't passed last year. That said, the Cook County Chamber's been very successful over the course of our time of working with the governmental affairs team. We've secured in overall projects for the county, over seven million dollars. And that's also with IRRB funding. So, I'm happy to take any questions, I can tell you it's a work in progress and sometimes you have to go up to the plate and hit the ball twice. We might be doing the same thing next year if a bonding bill doesn't pass or if we are, if we're too far down in the line because a lot of people got ahead of us last year with no bonding bill. But it's a, it's a really thoughtful process, I would have to say, with the chamber and working with the governmental affairs teams. It's nothing that we could do as a chamber on our own without that relationship with those folks that are at the Capitol and understand the system and understand the players and the committee members and the heads of committees. And I would have to add to that, that Senator Grant Haushild and Representative Scraba were very, very thoughtful and very, we're welcome when we go there. They understand and they appreciate the fact that we are there in person. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I wanna double down quick and just say, of course, the chamber wouldn't wanna do this without hiring a lobbyist, we could just hire our own lobbyist if we wanted to. But there's a certain magic or power in partnering with locals from other perspectives with other issues and coming together to the Capitol. And, and so I think this is a much better strategy for us to partner with our, our local other entities and businesses and, and other voices that can come and say the same thing and that we can support their project as well. So we've, we've done that, we've been a voice to support other folks' project and to just formalize it this way, it makes a lot of sense to me. And they picked a good person to work with too, that did a good job setting up our day and has established relationships like Linda already said, so.
And they are, they will open themselves to, you know, if Mike or Mayor Benson called and said, you know, we're gonna be there for, say, the League of Minnesota Cities, they will definitely work with anybody who wants to be present at the Capitol. I know right now, last year, through IRR funding, Cook County Higher Ed, which often gets state dollars to operate, will be there on Tuesday of next week and they are testifying to get those dollars because there's been a change in leadership within that group that makes decisions and so they're just, the money's approved, they're just trying to get the funnel open to get their dollars for Cook County Higher Ed. So I know there's at least three community members, including Director Karen Blackburn, will be testifying in front of the Education Committee. And that's organized as well by our governmental affairs team, so. Know that they avail themselves whenever possible. And I love going down and testifying, I'll do anything that I have to do to, to make sure our projects get pushed through. And what I handed to you today was just a packet, which includes our legislative agenda, the handouts that we would have shared with our senators and representatives that we met with, and we had eleven visits that day, it was a crazy day, very well thought out and planned. And it shows also some of the other programs that the Cook County Chamber has in place for you all to participate in. And I think there's a lot to be said about community, getting together, back to the normal, you know, B-to-B networking with our social connecting points and I know Mayor Benson attends quite often and you're welcome to all attend, so, and that goes to the entire staff of the city.
Yeah, are that, are your, oh, I didn't pull everything out of here. Your chamber connects and all that in here?
Out now through October of twenty-five. Yep. Get them on your calendar, come on. Any questions?
Anything else you're wondering about the lobbyists or you're all?
Thank you again.
Thanks, Linda.
Really appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Best Development Agreement Modifications, which we talked about at an earlier meeting. And what this basically meant was, I don't think funding's the right, well, kind of is funding, it's, it's the-
Developer, it certainly is.
It is, not, from the other, we're not sources of funding, but more the increments of the guarantee or part of funding.
Yeah, the security requirements.
Yep. Anything? So, did either of you want to say anything this evening? We did talk about this at a prior meeting, did you know that? Okay, we went through it all and saw the changes.
My name is Chris Gildam, I'm owner, operator and developer of Vest Unchained. I just wanna say this, this thing has taken a long time and, and I appreciate that as long as it's taken and seemingly tabled, Mike was willing and able to keep the conversation going and finally get to a place where we feel pretty comfortable about stepping off and pulling the trigger on this thing and getting it going, so I think we're in a good spot to do that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Craig, I'll bring a story there so he doesn't get forgotten on screen.
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, I'm just glad that we finally got here.
What, anyone? I'm sorry.
I'll put a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I would second that.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, I'm once again going to do the required roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye, so that is unanimous for City Council Resolution 2025-02.
Great. Thanks very much.
Hey, thanks, Chris.
All right, and that brings us to the end of our items. We're moving on to council and staff reports. Craig?
No, I have a park board meeting next week, so I'll have, well, we have something coming before the city, but that's, that'll be later, I guess, March.
Yep, well, yep.
March 5th or the end of March, yeah. Yeah, so right now, right now at this time, I don't.
Okay, all right. Michael?
Library tomorrow.
Oh, timing is off on all of this. Bill?
Yeah, we had the Arrowhead Animal Rescue and I think you and Mike are aware, it seems like the thing that they wanna know is the status of where they stand with the agreement with the city on moving it forward. They don't anticipate any real building activity until April. And some of their numbers have come in more favorable as they're going through, you know, like for the electrical, I think I've shared that last time. They're making progress, they're getting website up that'll help get their message out there and help people connect and donate and volunteer. They've had a little change in structure. Pat, or not Pat, Barb Backlund is president now and new secretary also, Pat Campanero.
Oh, okay. So, did you guys work out your, the agreement status or where that is or what's the next steps on that?
We're gonna reconnect with their, their board member that is the one that's kinda spearheading that. And it, there was, the reason we stopped talking about it was that it wasn't the most critical issue for their operating, the building was the most important. And it wasn't because there was any disagreement about what the contract said, so it's very easy to just pick it up and do it again.
Sure.
So we think now this is a form that we're pretty, I know you worked on it earlier and then they did.
It got to what I thought was pretty well-finished version before we just set it aside to focus on the building, so. I don't have any concerns about what it, what it said when we last spoke about it.
Yeah, and the one presented from their attorney, isn't that like different or?
There's a few things, but the, the work that he did was basically the same as what we also did, take the previous agreement and the terms that we're in and just try to make it relevant to today's issues. There, there isn't a marked difference, yeah.
Okay, good, all right. Anything else, Ben?
No, it's, I think that's close to it. I mean, Celine Morowitz is kinda seeming to play a bigger role in trying to pull together the design and get some pricing and, and some interested parties to help them pull this thing off and, and close it up.
The insights, the layout.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, getting, getting it coupled together and then coming up with the plan for the flooring and so forth. And Pat is going to be writing a grant to try and get some funding for interior finishing and so forth, so. But yeah, it was really, the last thing that was said to me was, could I look into the status of the agreement? So, that was the last comment at, at that meeting, so.
Well, at least in the past, I recognized, and like you said, there's new board members, whatever, apparently, but it's always been they want an agreement before they wanna spend money because they're concerned that if they do that and then the agreement doesn't go, you know, and I get that's chicken and egg to some degree, but I get it.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind that we've already spent all the money that we and the county authorized, so, you know, our fifty thousand dollars is in this deal and they've spent quite a bit more than that, the AAR has. So, yeah, we're, we are making a lot of great progress towards this project and I like the energy they've got right now.
Okay, great.
And tree board is tomorrow.
That'd be nice, okay.
HR Committee. It's good, we had a good meeting, I thought. See, where do I wanna, I wanna start? So, I think we, we spent the bulk of our time kinda talking through, you know, this merit market-based pay system that we're, we're gonna try to implement and more or less, how, how do we wanna, what's the right way to bring the city council into the conversation? The employees that are gonna be affected and, and then also maybe the public at large, right? Like, how do we unroll this program? And not just so much that, but also explaining the background work that we did to, to come up with the strategy and then, and how it, how it works, right? Cause I think it's, that's super important to understand that it's not, you know, we're trying to eliminate bias and subjectivity and so like, we're taking market and merit and combining and meshing, right? So, how do we do that and what's the timing look like? And so it was really kind of a, I think it was a good, we're in a good place, I think it's, it's moving quite well. Ravina Claxton's remarkable, she's very, very good.
And is that, so this is obviously not the union corrects? And how, how many are there or what percentage are not?
Well, they're just department heads, right?
Oh, okay, okay, that's kinda what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, for the most part, I think it's, that's-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and maybe not even all of them.
Right.
But, yeah. Some that we probably would consider department heads are actually not there in the union. I mean, we might treat them that way, but-
Yeah.
We're not talking about changing anyone who's in the union.
Right, right, yeah.
And like Ben said, you know, there's a lot of subjectivity because there's a lot of data pulled and even if you took out like the merit or the performance part of it, it also is just good information, so we know where everyone sits relative to similar jobs that are, you know, like are you kinda behind in where you should be and are you ahead in where you should be, so. And just like Ben was saying, it's really good data that's gotten pulled to make this a real objective place to land. And those are all the base foundational work we needed to do.
Yeah, cause before, if I remember right, it was kind of just linked with like, if the, if the union gets a three, then we get a three and-
Right.
Increases that way, yeah. Rate itself was also just an internal comparison, job ratings between jobs, which still has to be a part of it, but we didn't look at market other than where we thought we really needed to, which is pretty rare and now that, that's gonna be more of the focus on these jobs.
And there's some really nitty-gritty details and we're gonna, we'll show you the whole thing. I mean, we want everybody to see the whole thing and try to understand, like, how did we get exactly where we, and then hopefully there's a lot of questions, so I don't know when we can do that or get that to, to the city council, but-
Yeah, so what we talked about was Ravina and I have a little work we wanna do first and then one of the work sessions we're just gonna take and, and this will be the topic. So, and it's not, it doesn't have to happen immediately because the most likely time we're gonna make this change is for next year's wages. Yeah, so we'll, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna make it go away, but it's not gonna be next time probably.
Sure. But anyway, so that's, it was exciting, it's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, you kinda feel like it was a big leap of, wow, it's right here.
Yeah, cause there was a lot of, lots of buildup to it and there's still a lot of detail work, right? But there's a-
And, and the year before, and it's just, it takes a while, cause you just don't get ten op, you know, opportunities- And it's just, it takes a while because you just don't get 10 op, you know, opportunities to do it in a short period of time. But we're learning and, so that's on the agenda, too, to just kind of get this all along. It's a big effort.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. We went to the Grand Marais Business Coalition meeting Tuesday before last, and one of their major topics was, I was going to pull up the agenda again, but it had to do with cannabis events and just asking, like, well, where should we have cannabis events?
At your backyard.
Yeah, yeah, and I can't, I'm trying to remember the other, I should pull up my agenda, I meant to do that. But there was sort of some lack of, you know, just, there wasn't the interest from the particular business owners that were attending that meeting and/or that much awareness I sensed about where the whole state was and us in this community about cannabis. And it probably has to do with the nature of their business, like, it just doesn't apply to them, and so they maybe haven't thought about it as much, right? But the whole, so one of the, one of the suggestions was a bunch of public property for a cannabis event. So then I had to say, well, at this point, not that the city can't change their mind, but we have said that won't be consumed on public property, so you don't have to contemplate Boulder Park or, except, of course, the campground, because we want campers to be able to, and the campground. But anyways, I don't think a lot came out of that conversation, because there just wasn't that much. And then they just reviewed some of their projects. Had an EDA meeting. We did the final approval, approval for the broker to sell Superior, or list Superior National, of course. Talked, discussed the RFP to begin some project work for Taconite Harbor. And then one thing that's been really helpful is the new EDA director in putting together her report that they send out. She's adding a section called suggestions, so she looks and reviews how things have been do, done or whatever. If she has any suggestions, she's popping those in to make us think through things. So that's been kind of nice, fresh eyes and, you know, and more, and this is like just, I would say more like just process things, of how we do things as a board and that kind of piece. So that was nice. And then I just had a couple of questions. Well, why don't you go first, Mike?
Great. Furniture started being delivered. So at this point, we have half moved in to City Hall, at City Staff anyway. There, there's still some project work happening in the building, so we're not entirely there. And we're not ready to open the doors to the public yet, but we're going to start getting ready now that we're in our offices a little bit. It's funny how many things you notice as issues, though, when you finally occupy a space, it's going to be a while to learn how to operate this place. But it's, it's a terrific building.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the public will be extremely proud of it and happy that that's their building. We are starting to plan the ribbon-cutting grand opening. Most likely, both City Hall and the liquor store will have been in operation for some time when we do this.
Right.
Because we want to wait for the outside improvements to be completed before, before we do that. So I don't know what that date looks like yet, but we're thinking to wait and see whether we can get the AV setup done before the first Wednesday, because it's the first Tuesday that they're showing up, so probably not. The, wasn't here last meeting because I was down in the Capitol, you got a great report about that already, so I won't belabor the point, but I do want to say it's good to work with the attorneys at Carnival Burns or the lobbyists at Carnival Burns that are helping us. They do reach out with questions and updates as staff people are talking to them. They're continuing to work on our behalf. And if you are planning on going down and want to stop in and say hello to somebody at the Capitol, let us know, we'll get you in touch with them and they can make arrangements for you. So it's good stuff. And I'm planning on being on vacation in between the two March City Council meetings. So I'll be here for both meetings, but in the mean, in between them, I will not be.
Um, I was going to ask Kim, but she's not here, but maybe you know anyways, Mike. So we talked about, you said she was putting together the template for the total compensation statement. I was just going to ask about when we would expect to get a peek at that. Do we have a timeframe or do we have to ask Kim that?
We'll have to ask him.
All right, that's another part of the HR work to hand to all employees, so. So Patrick, you got the public art policy up today, but we got to remove a couple you probably could see from our conversation. Is the cri, the scoring criteria ready yet?
No, the form is ready, but the criteria is not.
Okay. I have a reason I'm asking that part, which we'll get to. And then is the fireworks application ready yet for online?
Not yet.
That's probably time to get going on that. The, I'm pretty sure you got this communication, no? I know we've talked about it, but there was supposed to be an email sent out, I don't know if it came to you or not. No?
About what?
Fireworks.
No.
No, okay.
Who's fireworks?
The Lions Club will no longer be hosting the Fourth of July fireworks. They're going to concentrate on their-
Just the-
Fisherman's Picnic fireworks.
Okay.
So-
Who's picking up that one?
Well?
We're looking for volunteers.
Ah, I see.
You might be them.
Hopefully licensed volunteers.
It's-
That's a requirement.
It's been communicated to the chamber and VCC. And I thought, but whatever. But either way, it's time to get that application up online, and we really got to outline the process because it's completely confusing and ridiculous and so much time gets spent on trying to even figure out why. It makes sense once you know, but it's ridiculous. So the form is super easy, you know, we just use the template, and I created a one-off, the state gives you a template, but the process, yeah. So I, I just anticipate there could be new players coming into this, and we better get this up online and make it easy and efficient and get it ready to go for them. Okay, then this, so the art policy goes back to, we know that the park board has approved the, is it MOAB? Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
MOAB art project, and it's been, it's now going to come to the City Council for a final vote. And Mike and I have talked about it a couple times, and there were some questions that Dave Tiersteg got answered, but I'd like to get that on the March 5th meeting. But what I'd also like to do is make sure the rest of, I haven't seen it either, but the, all of us get to see that project ahead of time and also have that criteria that we could use to score, so there's, we're following, you know, what, what we're asking the CEC to do. But it also would give us an opportunity to have a, you know, an objective, you know, we're all looking at the same elements and, and have a way to make a comment on each part and then kind of put thoughts together.
It's March, definitely March 12th, by the way.
Oh, 12th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Craig mentioned that, too.
I've said that, yeah, for other things. Okay, apologize, the 12th. So if you and I need to sit down, and we did that one time back in January for all of this, but if you still have questions about that criteria, let me know and we'll get it out. And if, if for some reason there is any changes coming our way to this project, then it needs to go back to the park board before it comes to us. I mean, if they approved it, whatever comes to us should be the same thing. So we'll look for that then, and I don't know why, I'm sorry. I've marked myself up for a few things on the 5th recently, I'm not sure why. Okay, that's all I have. 7:12. Thank you, everybody.
Good work.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thanks.
Chris, thanks, Craig.
Thanks, Craig.